Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Here.
Councilmember Litzel?
Here.
Thank you. We have no introductions tonight, so we will move right into public hearings. At this time, the council will recess to conduct a public hearing regarding the city of Kirkwood budget for fiscal year 2025-26. Mr. Hessel, do you wish to enter exhibits into the record?
I would, Mayor. It offers Exhibit 1, the affidavit of publication verifying notice of public hearing, appeared in the St. Louis County, and I will note for purpose of the record that in that notice of publication, there was a summary of the proposed operating in capital budgets, revenues, and financing sources, as well as expenditures. Exhibit 2 is an affidavit of publication verifying notice of public hearing appeared in the legal ledger. Again, there was a summary of the proposed operating in capital budgets, including revenues and financing sources, as well as expenditures. Exhibit 3 is the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kirkwood.
Thank you. Mr. Hawes, who's going to present the issue to city council?
That would be City Finance Director Mary Spron, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The proposed budget presented tonight is balanced in accordance with Missouri state statute. A draft of the budget is available on the city's website on the Finance Department page for all residents to review. The budget process began this summer with departments updating the five-year capital plans, budget priorities, and performance measures under the supervision of Chief Administrative Officer Hawes. This was followed by departments preparing the first draft of their operating budget requests in September. This draft, over the next few months, went through several reviews and edits before becoming the proposed budget presented tonight. Excuse me. As the budget process continued, the proposed draft budget was presented to the Citizens Finance Committee. This committee met weekly with various department directors from September through December, in which they focused on and reviewed key strategic areas of the proposed budget. In a work session on January 9th, the committee presented their report to council. The fiscal year 25-26 proposed budget includes anticipated income, including reserves, of $131,069,000, the majority of which is comprised from the General Fund and the Electric Fund, which represents 30% and 27%, respectively, of this total. So basically, almost 60% of your budget is comprised of those two funds. So the General Fund provides the funding for all general city services, excuse me, which includes streets, recreation, planning and development, and basically, public safety, which is your police and fire, dispatch, just to name a few, and finance. In addition, the proposed budget includes total expenditures of $130,296,000, and then of this total, $31 million of that total is budgeted for capital outlay. That's approximately 24% of your budget is capital outlay. Grant revenues of $9.3 million are budgeted to offset the cost of the capital, which is about 30% of that cost of capital, will be recouped with grant revenues. Federal and state grants for street improvements are typically 80% of the cost of the project, so that's your 80-20% of your, basically, your street projects. The proposed budget also includes an appropriation in the amount of $6.3 million for debt service payments. And finally, the proposed budget includes a request to reappropriate $1,929,060 for previously approved projects that will be incomplete as of March 31st, 2025. Excuse me. Nope, that's fine. I'm fine. It's my allergies. I have tea that I just drank right before I came up here, but apparently it didn't do very much good. I would like to personally thank administration and all the department directors and managers whose teamwork and dedication made this budget project possible. Also, thank you to the Citizens Finance Committee members, Mayor Gibbons, and city council members. This has been an especially challenging year for the Finance Department, as you all know, and I would like to say thank you for your continued patience and support. I'd also like to give a huge shout-out to the entire Finance Department for their dedication and hard work, which is instrumental to our department's success. So.
Very good. Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions?
I do. First of all, thank you, Mary. I know it's been an incredible year for you and your department, and we really appreciate all your time and effort and energy in getting through the year. It's not been easy. So first of all, thank you to you and your leadership in the Finance Department. You mentioned the $6.3 million for debt service payments this year, and that is on a $70 million debt service for the city, correct?
Yes.
We have $70 million, which is the COP's inter-fund loans and capital leases.
Yes, that's correct. That's everything.
Anybody interested, they can look in the records of that.
Yes.
And you also mentioned the reserves. So reserves and transfers are about $24 million, and then the rest is just revenue through our sales tax, property tax, other funds, correct?
Correct.
Given the real estate assessment year and the new law that caps assessments for all over 62, this is a first time, first year, and we really don't know what that impact is going to be, correct?
Correct. And honestly, I have not heard anything yet on that. I haven't heard anything from MML or any other municipalities on estimating that at this point.
Because I think anybody 62 and older that meet the criteria have until June to file, then the county will agree, and then by the time you get the information in September, where it's hard pressed to know where our real estate tax collections may be at. And this is usually a bump-up year, but we don't really know yet.
Correct.
And then this budget also includes a potential water rate increase, and the council will be addressing that at the next meeting, but that's a 27% increase with, I think we're going to check to see if there's an infrastructure renewal increase also embedded in this.
I believe there was, wasn't there? Didn't we increase that? Yes, we did.
Okay. So that is part of this as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Just to talk about for a minute about the department and the struggles that you've had, we've been going through the past two years, switching to an ERP.
ERP.
ERP, which is putting us in the cloud for the first time, which is a big, big deal and helps our security and everything else. But that's been a big project that's really weighed on your department. And then on top of that, you had some employee changeover, but you're now fully staffed, and we've got the ERP going, so.
Still in the process, but it's, I think there's light at the end of the tunnel with that as well, so yes.
Just so people understand what that meant. Any other questions?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes. Thank you, Mary. Looking at the General Fund, and this is just mainly to ask it out there so we can get an answer for our citizens. General Fund revenues for the '26 draft, $34.9 million. General Fund expenditures, $39.1 million. How are we handling the gap there between the revenues and the expenses of that General Fund?
The balance comes out of reserves.
So if somebody from the public is looking at this, because they see this, and they see the $34 million, we're $5 million short.
Right. And reserves is because of savings in prior years. That's how that reserves builds up.
Exactly. We just had a conversation.
Right.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much for your work, Mary.
Yes.
And that's the same for the enterprise funds, or the same thing, because they are, it appears to be a deficit budget, but it is, the reserves are covering that deficit. So you look at all the enterprise funds, it's the same.
Yes, that's correct.
Good. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Now we'll move into public comments. I'm kind of assuming there are none?
Mayor and council, there are no requests for comments on this public hearing.
I thought that. Okay. Then, hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill will be on the March 6th council meeting agenda for first reading consideration. All right. Now, at this time, council will recess for another public hearing for the downtown special business district budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Hessel, do you have anything to exhibits into the record?
I do, Mayor. I have it offers Exhibit 1, the affidavit of publication, again, verifying notice of public hearing appeared in the St. Louis County, and that notice of publication did include the statement, a summary of the proposed special business district operating budget, including total revenues, as well as all total expenditures. Exhibit 2 is an affidavit of publication verifying notice of public hearing appeared in the legal ledger, and again, that notice did include the total revenues and total expenditures, as well as a summary. And Exhibit 3 is the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kirkwood.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hawes, who will present the issue to city council?
That would be downtown SPD Executive Director Donna Pugh.
Hello, Donna.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's good to see you back here for my perennial appearance to talk about the downtown Kirkwood budget. This year, we're budgeting $428,300 in total. Partially, the special business district is $314,300, and $114,000 for the farmer's market. As I think most of you know that our downtown Kirkwood business and property owners and promotional partners fund most of the activities of the special business district, along with any possible profit we make from running the farmer's market. None of our funding comes from the citizens of Kirkwood. It's all from businesses and activities in the special business district. Last night, we held our annual meeting. Thank you, Mayor Gibbons, and councilperson Paul Schaefer for joining us and presenting the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget has also been available on our website for viewing to the public and our downtown members. In the document that you received, there is a breakdown by account, but an overview would include administration, which is very similar to recent years, and we have a number of fixed and operating expenses, things that you would expect, like rent, utilities, telephone, staff. We have two full-time staff members, a part-time staff member, and an intern. Our salary and personnel expenses are split between the special business district and farmer's market. We devote some of our funding to public area maintenance and improvements, and you'll notice that there's $25,000 in there that is a transfer that we transfer to the Parks Department for their assistance in our downtown planting and seasonal planting program. Downtown Kirkwood also coordinates public area holiday lighting and supports the lighting along the perimeter of our member businesses' buildings. Our promotional activities is probably something that most of you are familiar with, and they consume the majority of our discretionary budget, things like the Summer Concert Series, the Peach Festival Sidewalk Sale, Route 66 Festival, Halloween Walk, Holiday Walk, et cetera. The details recording our event schedule and expenses are in the budget document that you received. And of course, we will continue selling our popular downtown Kirkwood gift certificates, which support our local businesses and community. Lastly, Kirkwood Farmer's Market. We will continue to manage space rentals and marketing for the farmer's market. Last year, we had 33 vendors, and the majority of them are returning this year. Weather permitting, the 2025 season will officially begin on April 5th. And lastly, I'd like to thank the city council and all the city staff for their support to the special business district. We couldn't do what we do without your help and support. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. McLean?
I'm looking at the revenue and this page right here, and you have the 25 budget, and then the actual, and then the balance. What's the actual numbers through? What date is that?
That was in January. That was a date in January that those are in there.
So as of January, you still had $150,000, well, more than $150,000 of revenue out there that you were expecting.
Mm-hmm.
Business licenses. What?
Business license, yeah, we had this question last night, too. This is a little tricky. Our expenses mostly occur in our third quarter, but our revenue, most of it doesn't come in until our fourth quarter. Business licenses aren't due until February 28th, so of the end of this month, because we're still in the current fiscal year, so we haven't received that funding yet. Does that make?
So the money you haven't received, you received in February, is that for last year's budget, then? So they're paying a year, they're paying in month 12, or is it for the upcoming?
It's for the last budget, so fiscal year 2024-25.
So a business owner operates for a whole year until they have to pay their business license in February of the following?
I guess that's the way it works. It's not just the special business district. It's that way for the whole city. February 28th has been the date for a long time.
Mrs. Over here shaking her head, yes, so.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the property taxes come in after January typically anyway, so this is when most of the revenue from those two sources comes in.
How's the business licenses money coming? Is it coming directly to the city, or does it go to St. Louis County first, and then to Kirkwood?
Business licenses come directly to the city.
And so we don't collect that money until February, end of February?
March, really.
March. So they have a whole year to operate without paying the business license?
You could look at it that way. They pay their license at the end of the year. In our fiscal year, it comes at the end of our fiscal year. That is correct.
What happens if they go out of business in the meantime?
Depends if they've, we're not going to recover it. That's typical.
All right, okay. And then what happens if you have money left over at the end of the year reserve? Do you just build up a reserve?
Mm-hmm.
So there a filing sheet here showing your reserves that you currently have?
It is not included. I'm sorry about that. No.
Next year, you're going to have about $114,000 excess that, the total revenue for fiscal '26 is $428,000. Expenses are $314,000.
But we have the farmer's market as well, so that's another 114. We pretty much break even. We're pretty much budgeted to break even. And if we don't get all the revenue, we think, then it comes out of our fund balance. And if we don't spend it all, then it goes back into our fund balance.
Perfect. Okay.
We have to, you know, maintain a fund balance, basically, to fund the year, because, as you just pointed out, we don't get our revenue till the end of the year. The city's pretty much in the same position.
I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Real quick, so you don't plan on having to use any reserves in your revenue right now? And then, under your expenses, transfers to other funds at $25,000?
That's the $25,000 that goes to the Parks Department for maintaining the public area plantings, the flowerpots on all the corners, things like that.
Your date is $1,800, so you owe the parks a big chunk?
Well, I think that there was some of it that was transferred out of a different fund, and that needs to be straightened out. But, so we don't owe them quite as much as you think, but yeah, I think there's $13,000 in another that got moved under a different account number.
And I love your cheers to many years, okihatri at 98, so what a great.
They were with us last night at the annual meeting, which is really great. They're going into their fourth generation. We had Walter Smith from Cornucopia, who's been with us for 42 years, and I asked him to give a toast, so that was kind of fun to have Walter do that. And yeah, it's pretty impressive, the list we have of long-term businesses, and that with some of the really active, exciting new businesses. It's kind of like the secret sauce, the old and the new, and it's a really good mix.
All the chicken coops going up in Kirkwood, okihatri should be able to be around for another 98 years.
Coyotes love.
I think it's more the bird seed, but yeah.
Hopefully, that doesn't have corn for deer.
Anybody else have a question?
I do.
Okay.
The building you're in, I don't know how many years ago, was purchased, and I believe the water department loaned you the money for it, or I'm not sure how that, so where are we, where are we at with that?
The special business district office building is owned by the city of Kirkwood, 130 East Jefferson, right next to the library. We have a 25-year lease at a set fee, which we pay, and we're responsible for that amount every month, and we are responsible for having a tenant upstairs and renting out that space if we choose to do that to offset our lease.
Okay. I don't know what I thought was going on. If you were purchasing it, paying the water department.
Well, John could talk about this. He helped us with this. I mean, we went through quite an exercise trying to purchase it ourselves, and it was determined that without going out for bonds, we really couldn't do that. So the city ended up buying the building, and we're the tenant.
Okay. And that's, is that the rentals facility's $26,000?
That's our rent, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to try and clear that up, where that was at.
Yeah, and we do have a tenant upstairs, and that's a source of revenue for us that we rent the space out to. Pennington and Shea is our tenant upstairs.
As far as maintenance and scheduled maintenance or a new HVAC, I'm guessing that the city, because it's our building, you just pay your rent and hope that the landlord takes care of you, right?
Yep. Trace does a good job.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick clarification.
Yes.
You said you leased the space for, it's a 25-year lease?
Yes.
We talked earlier about.
Parks Department.
The Parks Department?
Parks only.
Parks only is one year, okay.
Okay. I am going to guess that we have no public comments, but David?
Mayor and council, we do not have any public comments.
No yellow cards.
Thanks, Donna.
Okay. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill will be on the March 6th council meeting agenda for first reading consideration. Now we go into public comments.
You need me to read this?
I'm kind of thinking we don't. What do you think?
Mayor and council, there are no requests for public comments this evening.
All right. So then we'll move into the agenda. Is there a motion in second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, the consent agenda has passed. We'll now move into unfinished business. Bill 11064A.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code, Chapter 25, zoning and subdivision for sidewalk requirements not part of a subdivision in Section 2569a 2ii.
Good, thank you. Are there any comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzel?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill 11068.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance repealing Section 14-385, use of electronic communication device while driving prohibited of the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances.
Do I have a motion and a bill to accept Bill 11068?
Motion.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments?
Can we talk about this, Sis?
Yeah, I was going to ask just a little explanation as to why we are, that's right.
The long version is that the state of Missouri, years ago, adopted a prohibition on the use of cell phones, handheld devices, but limited it to people, I can't remember, it was under the age of 21 or 21 or under.
Under 21.
The city of Kirkwood adopted an ordinance prohibiting all use of handheld devices. Candidly, I advised the city council back then that that's not enforceable, the state statute. You can't override the state statute on it, but it was adopted anyway. And then the state of Missouri recently changed that to prohibit all, the use of all cell phones, handheld devices. But curiously, they put in a provision that says that you can, it can only be enforced through the state statute. Municipalities cannot adopt an ordinance. But it came before the city council, and we adopted it anyway. So, I mean, the truth of the matter was, I always told the police department that you have to advise the new officers that they can't enforce this ordinance, and we were doing pretty well with it. But new officers don't know the history of it, so we found a couple of instances where they were enforcing it, and I advised the police department, we need to get rid of it, and recommended that they advise the city council. So you have the city attorney and the police department recommending that we remove this provision from our Code of Ordinances, because it is causing confusion, and legally, we cannot enforce it.
Thank you. I think it's an issue that the state is prohibiting cities from enforcing. That's a problem.
Same frustration that the city council felt back when they only limited, prohibited the use of cell phones for people 21 and under. Like, of all people that can text, they're a lot better at it than me. Why do they want people to use a phone? But that's what they wrote, and the city council said, heck with it, we're going to adopt our own. But there's a problem with enforcement. So, Mark, your point is very well taken. Agree wholeheartedly. It's a problem in Jeff City, among others. That's how we got here.
Thank you.
More questions, comments? All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11064, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, the bill has passed first reading approval. Resolution 62025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of integrate construction partners in the not-to-exceed amount of $5,543,000, which includes a contingency in the amount of $200,000 for construction services for the Kirkwood Ice Rink project, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in second to accept Resolution 62025 as read?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Is there any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzel?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 72025.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of SCI Engineering Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $33,825.67, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $3,075.06 for construction materials testing services for the historic train station. train station project, and authorizing and directing the director of procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Resolution 72025?
Motion.
Very good. Is there questions or discussion? Actually, I have something. I talked with Chris about this last night. There were, I forget if this is the one that had three bids or three RFQs or two, but the one behind it has the opposite. And I just would like for Chris to explain why we don't have information, we only have information about one as opposed to three or two, if you wouldn't mind.
Good evening. Yeah, I'll definitely address that. So these are professional services, and so professional services requires that we do a request for qualifications. If we would get pricing from all three of those firms, we are no longer only looking at their qualifications, but also their price. So in order to get the most qualified firm out there, that is why we only look at the qualifications and not get pricing from all three firms. So this would apply to this one, and then also your next item as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other, any questions?
I have a question. Is this included in the budget we already approved for the train station?
This is in addition to, yeah.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzel?
Yes.
Very good. Resolution 82025.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of Crawford, Murray, and Tilly in the not-to-exceed amount of $166,170 for the 2025 Water Distribution System Master Plan Update, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in second to accept Resolution 82025 as read?
Motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns?
Just want a clarification that what we're entering into here is going to also address the lead services that we know what's out there and what is not out there, or is this not included in this? It is not included in this analysis. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Is this the same company that did the 2014 one?
No.
Different one?
It is.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Litzel?
Yes.
Okay, we will now move into City Council reports. I have a couple of things, both of which I'm very, very excited about. We have the groundbreaking for the train station on Tuesday, the 25th, at 11:00 a.m., and it is going to be 60 degrees and sunny. So, yes. So I hope, you know, we get lots of citizens joining us. It's going to be a very exciting time for Kirkwood. And then the other thing I wanted to announce is that on Saturday, March 1st, we are going to be having a kickoff to our Signature Tree of the Year program. The 2025 Signature Tree is the post oak. Very excited. There was a group of foresters that came together. Our city forester was a part of that, and was led by Bill Rupert, who we all know is a huge tree guy. And they were the ones that decided on the post oak because it's so prominent in Kirkwood. But there will be, at 10 o'clock on March 1st, at the K-PAC, will be a discussion on trees, and experts coming in to discuss oaks in particular, and I hope that we get a lot of folks coming and joining us. There will be tables from all the different organizations in Kirkwood that are involved with trees, like 50 Trees and our Urban Forestry Commission and others. So I hope you'll join us. Anyone else have something to report on?
Thanks to our street department for doing such a great job.
Absolutely, yes.
Snow and all of our public services. They did a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Chief Administrative Officer, any report?
I have nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
City Attorney, report?
No need to report.
Okay. All right. Well, seeing no-
And City Clerk?
Oh, City Clerk. How could I forget?
It's all right. I have just one thing to report on. The upcoming scheduled public hearing for March 6, 2025, a request for a zoning map amendment for a portion of 1120 Earl Avenue from our four single-family residential district to B3 highway business district. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Now, seeing no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March-